July 12, 2023. It's 9:00 AM. First up is EDC Mark Milburn.
Good morning, Commissioner. We're having a board appointment of Ray Lwinski. He's the Richfield Township Supervisor. With the Chairman's permission, could Ray introduce himself?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to say I'm Ray Lwinski. I'm the supervisor for Richfield Township. You'll ask it to be on your economic development board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Boy, procedures, procedures. Okay, we'll start over. I'm Ray Lwinski, Richfield Township Supervisor. I'd just like to say to the board, I'd like to be on your Economic Development Committee. I've attended several meetings. We've worked through some several issues. I'm really excited to work with the county. The primary townships that are in this county need to all work together, and this is an excellent opportunity. I see some good opportunity. I see some good future. During my term, which is less than a year in Richfield Township, you'll look around Richfield Township and you'll see some of the great improvements that our board already made. And I look forward to bringing some of those opportunities to the county.
Thanks, Ray. I think Mr. Richfield Township Supervisor Lwinski is...
Osinski, yes.
Lwinski was going to add a lot of great value. And I've met with you several times, and he's going to add a lot of great value to the board. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Number two, L4029, Jamie Howserman.
Good morning, honorable commissioners of the Board of Roscommon County. I am Jamie Howserman, your Equalization Director. In front of you today is a copy of the State Tax Commission Form L4029. It is your tax rate request. Since the summer tax levy has occurred, now it's time to levy the winter levy. The tax rate request form, as you will see, is very much a statement of transparency. This 2023 tax rate request for Roscommon County would levy against our 2023 taxable value In the first row, you will see what you levied for your summer tax levy. Column number 11, the following millages would be levied on the December 1 tax billing. In each of these situations, it's my recommendation that you levy the full amount. Keep in mind that the commissioners at any point can levy less for any of those amounts, including zero. Our recommendation for levying the full amount is that this form was completed under the provisions of MCL 211.24E, which is truth in taxation, MCL 211.34, which is truth in county equalization, and truth in assessing, MCL 211.34D, which is the Headley Amendment, and MCL 211.37, county apportionment. Do you have any questions on any of the levies?
Yes, Gypsy Moth. Can you get into a little bit of history on what it has been? And why we're where we're at now? It's a big concern. The Gypsy Moth situation's been a big, big concern for a lot of my constituents.
So in column number three, you'll note that the last time there was an election for Gypsy Moth was on the August 2020 ballot, in which the voters approved a 0.1250 millage, which is what's in column number four. You'll also see that as over time, as the Headley Amendment has required, that millage rate has been rolled back. So your now maximum levy is 0.1228. That's consistent with all of the other millage rates within our county in that rollback fashion. You'll also see that 0.1228 is only leviable through this year, meaning that that millage rate will not be able to be collected December of '24. As such, you would want to seek voter approval for some other millage to fund that program. So I put in bold the three millages that are only collectible for 2023. Like you said, that being Gypsy Moth and Animal Shelter. I've already spoken with Animal Shelter. Their intention is to get you some ballot language for approval to go on to the next general election. I would suggest probably doing that for Gypsy Moth also. And the next question is, is there enough funding available to run that program effectively? I think that's probably where you're getting at. So from that perspective, then you may want to ask the voters for something more than 0.1225. You might want to ask for something else.
But I understand in years past, it was substantially higher, like a half a percent, instead of... What is the background? The commissioners?
Do you want to send me an email?
Maybe Dave, do you know what was that? I mean, that was the history from what I understood. Jody, do you know anything about that?
I'd be more than happy to go back and research that and bring it back at the next meeting.
I just wondered because that's one of the major complaints I get are the Gypsy Moss. And it just doesn't seem like much of a millage.
What I can say is the amount of millage rate that is available has been collected each year. So what the voters approved is being collected. So with that, if it's not substantial enough, which it may very well not be, I agree with that, you may want to go to the voters at the next general election and ask for something other than what's been collected in 20, starting in 2020. Something additional.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. So at this time, being no additional questions, I respectfully request that the following motion be adopted at your July 26 regular meeting of Board of Commissioners. A motion to levy the following ad valorem tax rates for Roscommon County for 2023's winter tax collection. E911 at 1 mil, Road Patrol at 1.5, Senior Services at 0.9822, Gypsy Moth at 0.1228, Animal Shelter with two millages, one being 0.2454, the other being 0.1474, Veterans Affairs at 0.1640, and Roads at 0.9414. I'd also like to ask for you to pass a motion authorizing your chairperson, David Russo, and your county clerk, Michelle Stevenson, to sign this form, L4029, our winter tax rate request.
Thank you, Jamie. Number three, Roscommon County Local Emergency Planning Committee, Vanessa. You're up for three and four hazardous.
Morning. I, before the meeting, placed on your desks the proposed LEPC bylaws and the last version of bylaws I've been able to locate. I've not been able to locate that any of them have previously been adopted or approved by our Board of Commissioners. So what I'm trying to do is just some housekeeping, starting from scratch, to make sure that our local emergency planning committee that is mandated by both federal and state statute, that we are in compliance in order to be able to receive hazard mitigation funding. So you'll see, and again, I believe these were sent out to you in advance, but you'll see that our bylaws got substantially longer, more or less to address a slightly larger board encompassing environmental representatives, as well as looking at additional community groups, trying to make sure that with our local emergency planning committee that we are including everybody that may be impacted by some sort of hazardous material. Do you have any questions on those? They were adopted by our LEPC on June 20, contingent upon your approval.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The Local Emergency Planning Committee and Roscommon County, how do we interact between the townships, emergency services with the townships? How exactly does that work? In other words, do we allocate monies towards the local townships for anything? Or how exactly what is...
I can't specifically speak to that. I participate and attend our emergency responders' command meetings or chiefs' meetings to contribute and facilitate ideas and kind of express what standards and norms are currently for emergency preparedness. However, as far as funding goes, to the best of my knowledge, it does not come with funding.
Perhaps our controller knows.
I'd be happy to look into that and bring it back to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Whenever works for you guys. Yes, sir.
I'll get it put out in two weeks.
Thank you. And then if we want to proceed to number four, which is a little bit more extensive.
Okay.
Back on June 16, when you guys participated in the elected officials' training with Lieutenant Castro, I also handed you guys a copy of our Hazard Mitigation Plan that was pending approval by FEMA. You'll see the letter dated July 5. It has been accepted and meets criteria to qualify for, or to qualify as a multi-jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. So following adoption at the local level, it will be formally approved by the federal government and has been approved by the state. The second page that I gave you right behind that letter is a synopsis of the 178-page document. It's long. And what I did is I tried to break it down by chapters so that it was a little bit simpler because there's a lot of jargon, there's a lot of definitions, there's a lot of legal descriptions of what things are. So with chapter one, it's basic introduction of what hazard mitigation is. A hazard mitigation plan addresses natural disasters that could affect a local community and is an administrative document that is issued to establish activities that should reduce or, when possible, eliminate long-term risks to human life and property. That's ultimately our goal. And one of the reasons why the federal government prefers mitigation activities is because they tend to be excessively less cost than disaster response activities. So that pre-planning, that mitigating activity, I'm told, is believed to save, to be a 1 to 6 ratio for savings. So the more we can do in advance, the better off we are, hopefully financially and for our citizens. Chapter two and chapter four are very similar in that they provide a profile of our county and our community, everything from hydrology to topography to local government organization and employment opportunities. Who's the highest employer? Where we have the most people? Then, chapter three goes into the planning process and describes who participated in the planning activities. All 13 jurisdictions within Roscommon County were invited to participate. That's county commission, all the townships in the village. Chapter five goes into our hazard analysis. And the top three hazards that were identified based on statistical information is wildfires with 10 to 11 events as a probable annual occurrence, snowstorms with two to three events as a probable annual occurrence, and one to two events for severe winds. That's not saying that that's for sure what's going to happen, but based on the statistics, most of which are from the 50s to current, that's what trends are showing. Now, one thing, for instance, ice and sleet storms, those are substantially up in the last 10 years versus the last 70 years. I can't say exactly what that's contributed to, but obviously, we're experiencing it. We know what that looks like. So looking at what our natural hazards are, that's the primary focus of this as far as the federal government is concerned. We, as a smaller municipality, as a smaller group of municipalities, choose to include man-made hazards because we don't have the resources to do a man-made hazard plan. So we do it as an all-encompassing plan. Larger jurisdictions like Grand Traverse County, they have a natural hazard mitigation plan than they have alternate plans. One thing that I feel is important to note because one of the funding opportunities that we will qualify for as part of this is high-hazard potential dams. We have one high-hazard potential dam, and that's Lake James Dam in Dutton Township. And then we have three that are, qualify within the significant hazard potential dams. Those are Pretty Dam in Nestor Township, Dutton Flooding Dam in Dutton Township, and Little Mud Lake Dam in Higgins Township. Those are the only four that meet the criteria for that sort of funding. So it limits, unfortunately, as much as we would like to be able to achieve or receive mitigation funding for some of our other structures, it's not something that we would qualify for because they don't meet that hazardous threshold. Chapter six is a review of the 2016 plan that's currently in place. And what it does is it looks over what activities were planned, what has been achieved, what worked, what didn't, what we need to tweak and change. Chapter seven goes into our action plan, and that's broken down into four goals. Well, one is protect public and health safety, or public health and safety, excuse me. Number two is minimize damage to public and private property. Three is maintain essential services. And four is manage growth and development. This is, they're vague, but they're vague for a purpose because there's a lot of different things that we can do. And ultimately, we want to make sure that we're meeting our communities' needs. Our communities' needs are very vast because we have a significant variation in population. We have young, we have old, we have wealthy, we have poor. So needs are different. And based on the geography and topography of our county, things are different, too. I mean, we have very rural people. We have people that live on top of each other, essentially. So, you know, the needs are vast, and thus, our goals need to be vague. The mitigation actions that we chose as the primary, we, out of 250 possible actions, 44 were identified as ones that were applicable to our local area, 14 of which we chose to identify as ones that needed to have action taken on them sooner than later. Integrating iPOS into our notification system, many of you have probably received the severe weather notifications through Code Red or through the National Weather Service, Amber Alerts and whatnot through your phones. What iPOS allows us to do at a county level is we are able to generate those notifications if there's something that meets a, meets a threshold. So as opposed to having to go through the state or go through the federal government to be able to issue those, we would be able to do those at a local level. Recruiting firefighter and EMS personnel. You talk to any fire EMS department, they'll tell you they're down staff. I don't know of any that are fully staffed at this point in time within our county. So one thing that was identified is the need to assist in recruiting those personnel. Disaster awareness and emergency planning. Making sure that we're planning accordingly, that our townships, that as a county, we are making sure that we're prepared for whatever may come our way. That's something that has always been, you know, it's been something that we've been doing, but it's not something that we've documented as something that we're doing in this plan. So it is considered a new topic. But again, it's kind of something that's being pushed to the forefront at this point in time. Community wildfire protection plan. We currently have one that was implemented in 2016. That plan is due to expire also. So working on getting that updated and making sure that, since that is identified as our primary hazard, that we're staying up on that. Hazard mitigation plan inclusion with other planning. That's getting our hazard mitigation plan included into the other master plans that exist, the recreational plans, making sure that towns, townships and village are including this because the data's here. The information doesn't need to be gotten again if it's used. Emergency power generators. While we have emergency generators at the county level, there's not a lot of emergency generators within other, within the municipalities, as well as some of our shelters. So while places have volunteered to be shelters, they don't necessarily possess the capacity to be able to be a shelter for a power outage. And a lot of times, if it's in the winter, if it's in the heat of the summer, we need power so that we are able to have heat or that, so that we're able to have air conditioning for our residents. So identifying the locations that would best benefit from having something like that. Instruct emergency shelters. We have a lot of people that camp this time of year, making sure that we have a secure place for them if there is a severe storm so that they are safe and we don't have to worry about picking up trees and people, just trees. Public education and the Code Red system. The Code Red system is something that's been in place within our county for a few years now, making sure that our public is utilizing it to its fullest capacity and that people are signing up for those notifications. We're just portable electronic messaging signs. Each sign runs about $10,000 to $12,000, and that's for the ones that are 18 by 24. Larger signs are even more expensive, but those are the types of signs that would be beneficial and helpful for all of the special events that we have, road closures, making sure that we're not searching for that specific sign that we need, that we can just put it out and program it to what it needs to say. Warning sirens are something that are slightly controversial at this point in time because there's data that shows that they're not as effective as they were once believed to be, especially where we now have cell phones for communication and can notify through that. However, within our county, we still have gaps in communication, and there are those holes where those sirens could still be very beneficial. Dam repairs are something that... There's been a lot of work done on our high-hazard dams. I know that Lake James Dam was just recently updated. And so that should hopefully be stable for the time being. However, there's always something that could arise. And with those high-hazard dams and the significant hazard dams, this allows us to be able to potentially seek funding if we need to for repairs to those. Public education on disaster and emergency preparedness speaks for itself. Living snow fences. We have roads, and I'm sure you've all experienced them in the winter, that there's that drift. It doesn't matter how many times the road commission goes out and plows, there's still that drift, and that's a hazard. So making sure that we are installing the natural snow fences to try to alleviate that as an issue. Developing emergency evacuation plans. This is something that we need to look at more in regards to, and especially in regards to special events that we host, making sure that the locations that we have have access routes for both first responders, but also exit routes for our people that are attending. A lot of times, I don't know that that's something that's taken as a primary consideration, is how the people are going to get out, especially in the locations where there's one way in, one way out. Training for our first responders. Again, that's something that we do regularly, but this provides us with an opportunity to potentially seek funding for that. Expand our ham radio operations network. Once again, we have a lot of active amateur radio operators within our county, and if communications go out, they may be who we seek. So making sure that we have a network significant enough to be able to communicate our needs based on the disaster. But all this boils down to is being eligible for mitigation project funding. Our plan, as it stands, will qualify us or make us at minimum eligible to apply for rehabilitation of high-hazard potential dams grant program, hazard mitigation grant program, building resilient infrastructure in communities grant program, flood mitigation assistance program, and the safeguarding tomorrow revolving loan fund program. What the revolving loan fund program is a 1% or less opportunity for, loan opportunity for the county to be able to match other grant funding. So if there's a $3 million project that needs to be completed or that we would like to be, like to complete, and we're able to get grant funding with a match of 25%, if needed, the county would have the opportunity to apply for a less than 1% loan to meet that match or whatever amount was needed. Chapter eight is the closing and follow-up that reiterates that this is a plan that gets updated every five years. It's something that the local emergency planning committee reviews annually at minimum and continues to update and keep current as this is ultimately a living document, although this draft is what is ultimately approved. And this is something that has been in place. I believe we're going on, this is the fourth cycle of having a hazard mitigation plan, but hopefully, you guys will adopt this, and this will be our new one. Do you guys have any questions? I know I covered a lot.
Somebody had originally wrote this.
Yes, the county paid a very substantial amount to have this written, I believe in 2016. And it was determined that the services that were provided weren't necessarily the best fit for our county. And so this is a project that my predecessor, Michael Beatty, had started and had submitted to the state. I received it back shortly after I started in this position last year and have been going back and forth with the state trying to get it to meet the criteria that they wanted it to achieve. So yes, this is something that in many counties isn't done by the local emergency manager. Typically, isn't even done by an employee within the county. However, we felt it most prudent and most appropriate to have it done here so that it was fitting for us.
Right. Yeah, I would say that on the EDC board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Do we have a current draft of the bylaws that we're using right now? Or do we just have a draft current?
So this, the one that has 12 on it is the only bylaws that I've been able to locate for the organization. I've worked with Clerk Stevenson, and I've not been able to locate any bylaws that are current for the organization.
But what I'm suggesting, I shoot from the hip here, we don't necessarily adopt the bylaws today. We, for two weeks, the chairman said, we need to understand that the bylaws could basically go into effect if we were to have an emergency tomorrow, that these bylaws would be understood, would be used until they're formally adopted by... I'm not sure how we'd verbalize that, but we need something into effect that would be current. So if we did have a problem tomorrow, it has something to go with.
I think, being that the committee adopted them or accepted them...
You can move forward.
...the approval, I think that's, that may be accomplished, but I can look into that further.
No, you don't have to. I'll go with that. I just wanted you to be understood that if we did have an emergency, we have something in place that the public would feel comfortable with, and we would feel comfortable with formally adopting it. It's understood, and you leave the meeting today, that these things are in effect until formally adopted.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chair, yeah. Back in 2016, when this wasn't adopted, you said that it was determined that it wasn't a good fit. Who determined it wasn't a good fit?
The committee, when they began the planning process in early 2020, late 2019, felt...
Committee?
The local emergency planning committee felt like the significant amount of money that was paid, I want to say it was to a sum of a little over $7,000 that was paid to this entity could be better spent in another way and that we locally possessed the information and the capacity to complete this plan, that it wasn't necessary to contract that out again.
Thank you, too, for your team and for the support.
Thank you.
Really, really good.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
When a major fund does not have revenues that meet expenditures. In this case, for the 2022 budget, our auditor had mentioned to you, had spoken about the childcare fund in depth. Traditionally, we receive a 50/50 split. Allegedly, we're supposed to receive a 50/50 split from the state of Michigan. That doesn't always happen. You can look at the 2022 numbers and see that they had initially been proposed to put in about $600,000. And we ended up with 371,544.97. This is my least favorite fund that we deal with because the state changes rules frequently at their level. There are new rules coming, but essentially we ended up with the deficit as Jim Anderson had mentioned of 18,793.79. So the deficit elimination plan requires a specific template, which you have in front of you, that wants the estimated budgets for a three-year period extended from the year that the deficit occurred. So these are the best guessed figures. Obviously, this is not based on much except for trends that are seen in the world of youth juvenile justice. So it's just percentage based. It's the best you get without more data of where the state will go. So what we will need to do is allocate that additional 18,793.79 that we are short from 2022. And then that will enable the deficit elimination plan to show a balance by 2025. It'll carry through 23, 24, 25. My suggestion is that we allocate just a teeny bit more and round it up to $20,000. Just in case. They need a fund balance is basically where we're at.
And the sad thing is, we have to do it. As things change, am I correct?
Yeah, we have to allocate the 18,793.79. The additional change is just as hopefully an extra carryover in case we're off in some roundings of pennies. But essentially where we're looking at for 23, 24 and 25 anticipated 3, 1 and 3% increases is that is where we are trending. Most of our expenses come through obviously under contractual services. That includes all of the required counseling. It also is placement costs in secured and non-secured facilities and also includes a minimal amount for in-home care. Our largest issue in Roscommon County is that we don't have the type of families that allowing for in-home care for these youths will provide a result that is positive. So the non-secure and the out-of-home placements, those are, those are the areas that our juvenile, juvenile court is trending towards and has trended for for probably the last decade.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. For the benefit of the people out here and in Zoom land, can you kind of like go back to square one on what this is exactly? I don't, I don't even know what this is.
But a deficit elimination plan?
No, no, no. I don't even understand what the childcare fund deficit, I don't see the 18 grand on there that you were mentioning. And I don't, I don't understand the allocations and how everything works. I'm new to the board as, as I'm sure Rex and Darlene probably also are curious and I, and I know the general public, you know, Ron, if you could just give us a little bit of background.
Sure. So obviously as Jim Anderson explained last week, the childcare fund is our youth juvenile court system. This is where the state of Michigan has charged the counties with those placement costs and those, those necessary needs for 18 and under who have been placed in the system per se. This is a court funded, i.e. general fund gives money to the court for this. It's very strict in its placements of who oversees what. So this is not something that the Board of Commissioners has charged for, they just have to fund it. So essentially what happens is at the end of every year, we have bills that come in for anticipated revenues to be paid. Traditionally with the childcare fund, it's anticipated revenues that the state of Michigan owes us that for one reason or another, we do not receive. And therefore it puts you in a deficit, which is the difference between your revenue and your expenditures. The 18,000 was in the budget and the audit that was presented two weeks ago. Essentially, we just have to provide to them this basic, the state of Michigan says, give us a four-year plan in this exact format, approved by the Board of Commissioners.
This will be on in two weeks.
I can, I can further expand on this. When I first got on the board 2001, one of the first things that came up to our discussion was Carl Geiger, our chairman at the time, said we had to pay $500,000 in childcare fund, something of that nature. And we're going to Carl and saying that just not paying. Understand, we, we have no, we have no choice. It's mandated that we pay it. I can appreciate Eric's comment because Carl said the same thing to me is that it's a mandated thing that we have to do. It's difficult at best to guess, but it's going to cost. It's very expensive and it's something we have to, it takes a large percent of our budget. Do you roughly, what is it, 4% or 5% of our budget that this?
No, it's more than that. We have a roughly $10 million general fund budget. So our allocation of 674, it's probably way more towards like 5%.
I'll go with 5.
Yeah.
So the 5% of our budget goes to childcare. So it's something that occurs every year. It's difficult at best to guess what it's going to be, but it's something that we have to pay. So just a little background.
Right, yeah, I just, thanks. I appreciate you appreciating my
Because I Years ago, I voted no, but it didn't do any good.
That we have to, and we can't accurately guess. Something we have to just shoot from the hip. I appreciate the chairman's comments, please, to 20,000. It's better for us to guess a little high and aim low and find out that we missed the mark.
Yeah. Yeah, that one year I voted no, but it didn't do any good. Any other comments? Okay, with that being said, we'll meet at 10 a.m. Yes.
Astor Green.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Revolve the agenda.
Subtle, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that. Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson. Aired.
Number five, approval of the minutes for 628, 2023 regular meeting. I'll make that motion.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Aired.
Number six, Class A Claims and Accounts.
Move to approve class A bills in the amount of $507,697.91.
Subtle, Mr. Chair.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Aired.
Claims and accounts, I'm sure.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of $102,261.60.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson. Aired.
Number seven, public comment. Sir, yes, sir. Yep, turn your mic on, mic on, please. Thank you.
Again, I'm Mary Lozenki, Supervisor for Richfield Township. I attended your workshop this morning and talked and Vanessa did her presentation on the hazard emergency response plan that she did. I'd just like to say I really applaud her and you should really, you know, you really have a gem here. The fact that she was able to finesse it and take previous, it's easy to hire it out. Just like the council member Oscar over here asked the question of who did it, why did it? It's easy to hire somebody who can read in a book. But to be able to take that stuff, I have over 40 years' experience in the fire service. I currently an instructor for advanced fire training. And it's easy to take a book and read it and say, yes, you need this. Just like Mr. Russo, I'm sure you understand. I could go into NFA and it can tell me I need 16 people on the fire scene before I can start anything. But everybody sitting here that has anything to do with fire service knows I'm not going to sit on the scene and watch a place burn until I get 16 people. And that's just not heard of. So taking that and massaging it. So I just want to give kudos to Vanessa for taking that and taking the time and due diligence instead of just hiring it out to somebody who gives us a plan we can't use.
Thank you. Anybody else, public comment? Turn your mic on and identify yourself.
My name is Greg Seenack and I'm a resident of Gairish Township. One of the things that I was hoping to encourage is more discussion about various things that the board takes action upon during these public meetings. And, and I think that, you know, it, as, especially addresses the situation with the SAD. At Higgins Lake, I've had a lot of people ask me about certain questions about how we got to where we are. And so I wanted to take a minute and, and explain some of these questions and what it appears to some people in the hopes that maybe these things can be discussed in public in the future. Um, one of the issues that's been raised is the absence of a specific budget item for the maintenance of the dam or dams, despite it being the county's responsibility. And people say that there appears to be a lack of appropriate planning to address the financial obligations associated with the three county dams, namely Higgins Lake, Oak Lake and St. Helen. The Higgins Lake control structure under a redesign and reconstruction in 2007 and has since been maintained and operated at a minimal cost. Between 2017 and 2021, only $580 was spent on maintenance at the Higgins Lake Dam. Therefore, it raises concerns as to why the county now claims that the cost of operating the dam exceeds their affordability. In 2010, the commissioners commissioned an extensive study of the Higgins Lake control structure by experts at the Spicer Group. These experts recommended minor changes to its operation and construction that would significantly enhance its ability to comply with the established legal lake level. Despite the recommendations, which could have been implemented without incurring legal fees or substantial repair costs, they were ignored by the county commissioner over the years. And it begs the question of whether these recommendations were ever seriously considered to save current costs that are being incurred. It's been stated that the Board of Commissioners has not actively sought alternative methods of financing the Higgins Lake Dam. No grants, local financial assistance or state aid have been produced, pursued thus far. Given the objections raised against the creation of the Special Assessment District, it would be significant to explore avenues for cost reduction to eliminate excessive expenses that would ultimately be borne by the Special Assessment Districts. It's worth noting that all the residents within the proposed Higgins Lake Special Assessment District boundaries are citizens of Gairish and Lion Township. While the entire financial responsibility for the Higgins Lake Dam falls on the Higgins Lake resident or will fall on the Higgins Lake residents if the, if the Special Assessment District is established, management of the dam is apparently to be overseen by county commissioners of some at-large residents. It raises the question of why the entire dam committee would not be composed of individuals from the, within the SAD boundaries. The creation of the Roscommon County SAD has already incurred hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees and further expenses would be imposed on Gairish and Lion Township residents to reimburse the county for these fees as specified in the county resolution establishing the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District. Many of these studies would likely reiterate the earlier findings of the Spicer Group and recommend changes to the control structure. This has led to the perception that the county has been careless in incurring these costs as they're ultimately the responsibility of the residents of the SAD. As the county commissioner meeting at June 14th, the county had already paid $89,477 for the Higgins Lake Dam SAD, $269,310 for the Holton Lake SAD, which apparently included approximately $100,000 of restoration and $32,658 for the SAD at Lake St. Helen. These projects are still far from completion. None of the legal or engineering fees incurred thus far would benefit the residents of Roscommon County or contribute to the necessary repair or maintenance of the Higgins Lake control structure. Instead, these costs primarily benefit attorneys and engineering firms involved while burdening the taxpayers of Roscommon County. Furthermore, a dam inspection was conducted in late 2022 and it confirmed that the dam was in good condition with excellent concrete and there were no recommendations for repair at that time. Therefore, it appears no immediate action is necessary for the structure. The overwhelming majority of people within the proposed Special Assessment District boundaries strongly opposed the implementation of the Higgins Lake SAD. Numerous emails have been written, residents have made personal appearances at county commissioner meetings expressing their clear opposition and it's perplexing how these current concerns can be so easily dismissed. Despite repeated requests, no details have been provided to the residents regarding the apportionment method that the SAD would implement. Without knowing how the apportionment will be made, it's challenging to evaluate whether it will be fair. Residents need information on what the state will contribute, how individual residents will be assessed and the financial obligations of the townships. The county should explore other recently created Special Assessment Districts.
Thank you, sir. Almost done.
Happy Wednesday. Quick lawsuit update, Courage versus Roscommon County Treasurer. As I explained before, that is our local suit that's on hold until suit A and suit B are finished. As a result of a decision made by the Court of Appeals in the Fox versus County of Saginaw, the class action portion was vacated by the U.S. Court of Appeals. So now these will be single suits that have to be filed as well. Cho versus Roscommon County, we have the status conference on July 20th and there is no current change in the opiate suit as processed. Special assessment projects, Higgins Lake, the hearing date for who is in and who is out is September 15th. Lake St. Helen, the soonest date that we could get was December 15th. We tried to make a strong case for a need, but the court
I'm sorry, December, September, what?
I'm sorry, September 15th for Higgins Lake.
Right.
And Lake St. Helen's hearing date set by the court is December 15th.
December.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But we did try to ask to maybe split September 15th between Lake St. Helen and Higgins Lake. But the court is adamant based on their calendar that they will have a full day for each and the next full day available for Lake St. Helen was December 15th. Holton Lake, the amended contract should be received by me next week. That's from GEI. Spicers will actually have a scheduled meeting with state representatives for discussion of legal easement access that doesn't currently exist on Holton Lake. Lake levels, I was on vacation and somebody else was steeded in my path and did not follow directions. So that will be handled.
I can tell you if you'd like.
I don't need you to tell me, sir. This is my report.
Okay, I, I thought you said it didn't get handled, so I was gonna, I was gonna help you out. That's all, no problem.
Thank you though. St. Helen is at 6.62, which is actually St. Helen is at six point six two, which is actually four point eight inches below. All the boards have run removed. I was just talking to Commissioner Wolfson, and we were talking about the stagnation of the water level not flowing through. So I'm not sure if that's something that needs to be investigated further downstream, but I will send somebody out. Higgins Lake is currently at five point one two, which is three inches below. All the gates do continue to remain closed. Holton Lake is currently at eight point one four, which is point four eight inches above the legal level with the boards removed in the two bays and the steel plate still in place. I will anticipate that the floodgate for St. Helen will be opened tomorrow, and Holton Lake will have the remaining boards removed pretty quickly based on the rainfall, so. Legislative update, there is a potential for revenue sharing increase in the state budget. I did send that out to all of the commissioners. It is suggested that you reach out to your state representatives to ask that they do this for all of the, all of the counties. It's not a large increase, it sounds good, and anything's better than nothing, but it essentially would equate to an additional thirty-four thousand dollars of our ten million dollar County General Fund budget. But like I said, something is better than nothing. I was on vacation, but before I left and a few things during finalized the two thousand and twenty-two audit adjustments and have submitted the finalized budget to the state entities as required. I finalized the requirements for the C D B G grant that we have the public hearing on. Wage and salary did provide recommendations for the great placement for the lake level control structure manager position. Based on the job description, the committee provided, and that information was given to the committee. And I just started as of yesterday, per request of Commissioner Censor, researching the new materials management laws and what that means for our county, so I will have that information for you in two weeks.
I have some questions. Yes, maybe I misunderstood you, Controller. Did you say that Lake St. Helen was under its legal level?
No, it's above.
Okay, that, that's what I understood, too.
Yeah, no, it's above.
Okay. It sounded like you said that it was.
If I said it was, if I said it was below, that is incorrect, it is above.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In respect to the St. Helena level, there is a beaver dam in the river, you can see it from M seventy-six in this downstream.
Yeah, that one normally dumps quick.
That Beaver Dam holds a lot of water back.
And we can't legally remove beavers.
He's some dynamite, that's a.
You need a drunk person down there.
There were van. Number eleven, do I have any visitors? Number twelve, unfinished new business, A is Spicers. Higgins Lake update, everybody received this today or an email this morning. Right there. Check it out.
I have some questions.
Yes.
When it's my time.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, what did we have to spend on this report? Just curious.
It was about thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay, well, back in two thousand and ten, I haven't, I read through this, and I don't see anything in there about the spillway, the scouring in the spillway. Back in two thousand and ten, we spent thirty thousand dollars for a much more extensive report, and there was scouring reported. They didn't address that at all. They also didn't address any of the rocks that were removed from the dam back in two thousand and fourteen. And Commissioner Wolfson, when he went out to the dam and took a look at it, this, he noticed quite a bit of scouring, I believe he reported at that time like six inches of scouring, and then we had Chase Shemke come in, who's a pretty qualified person, and he said that based upon the engineering data from two thousand and ten in the Spicer Report and his calculations, that there's approximately double the amount of water going through because of the scouring in the bottom of the dam. I'm, I'm wondering why, why? It seems that Spicer's picking and choosing now and not even looking at the previous data on what had happened on Higgins. I mean, it's the elephant in the room, everybody here knows we got a problem with that scouring at that dam, and they report not a damn thing wrong with it. I have a very difficult time believing there's something going on behind the scenes, that there's a reason that they're not reporting that scouring. And that's, and that's what this whole thing was about, was getting to the bottom of, you know, putting, you know, getting it back to where we have an apron on the bottom as they had recommended back in two thousand and ten, and reducing this water flow going through the dam. Something needs to be done, this is, this is nothing. We're required, we, this commission lost in the Supreme Court. It said we needed to maintain the legal level, right now Higgins Lake is three inches below its legal level, and we're doing nothing about it. Something needs to be done, it's the middle of the summer, people can't get their boats off their hoist, people are damaging their boats in the lake. There's a lot of problems, and we're just ignoring it. I reject this report.
Thank you. Anybody else? B, bees in the Special Assessment District.
I'd like to talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, we had mentioned earlier, and Jody brought up the fact, and we'd all talked about this before, and this seems to be getting kicked from meeting to meeting. I think we, as a commission, need to put something in writing, I will work up a resolution, if that's assigned to me, Mr. Chair, on our intentions to pay for the work that has been done, engineering and the legal fees on all the special assessment districts on all three of our lakes out of the tax fund, or perhaps come to some kind of a limit, like say a hundred grand for Higgins, a hundred and fifty for Holton, seventy-five for some allocation on what will be paid out of the tax fund, so we know that that part is going to be paid for. It would take a lot of heat off of us as commissioners if the people in our districts know that most of these fees, legal fees and engineering fees are going to be paid for by the county as opposed to those in the Special Assessment District. Our whole county benefits from our lakes. There should certainly be something like that, and we'd also talked about ten thousand dollars per year per lake level control structure being paid for by the county, because again, the whole county benefits from our lakes. So I think we need to pass a resolution and come up with a resolution that explains to the people that it is our intention, and we will pay for these special assessment district fees that have been allocated so far out of the tax fund. So if you appoint me to do that.
So Commissioner Astor Green did ask at the last meeting for some kind of finalized numbers right now to have a better discussion about the tax payment fund usage. So I did get a chance to put those together from you, if you just wanted me to kind of give you a quick snapshot.
That would be great, where are we at right now?
You may not always see eye to eye, but I do agree with you on this.
That's rare.
So to date, as of the billings that I sent for you guys to look at yesterday or the day before, our totals, the total for all special assessment creations is four hundred fifteen thousand, two oh seven forty-six.
Four one five?
Four one five, two oh seven forty-six. Of that, ninety-four thousand, one eighty fifty is to be repaid with the Holton Lake project, because that's the data that was collected, thinking you'd be moving forward with a change in lake levels for Higgins Lake.
Taken out, that would be taken out.
So if we take that back, we've got a total special assessment creation cost specific to just the creation of three special assessments, three hundred twenty-one thousand, twenty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Now, in two thousand and twenty-two, twelve thirty-one, at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, we transferred in a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two eighty-seven, twenty-two from the tax payment fund in two thousand and twenty-two. So that leaves us with a current, based off of our current billings and creations, a current remaining cost of one fifty-two, seven thirty-nine, seventy-four. And I'll email this out to you, I'm sorry I didn't before, I know you like pictures, so. So our tax payment fund, three hundred fifty thousand, we've been kicking around, that's two thousand and twenty-three's money. So that has nothing to do with one sixty-eight, two eighty-seven, that's already gone from last year's remaining balance. So if you take the three hundred fifty thousand and you hash out remaining creation costs, plus you hash out what it's going to cost for the Holton Lake engineering, which we will get reimbursed for, but remember, we can't do that until we have an engineering project to apply for, for bonding with. That would still leave us with ninety-five, two sixty left over for this year. For those court hearings, that'll be, that'll be a process to be hurt, so those will be the endings of that. So we'd still have an additional ninety-five, two sixty, twenty-six to play with for the courts as they go forward, because we're not done yet, obviously. But so it's there. Telling you it's there.
I'm, I'm hoping I'm having some support with the other commissioners on this. I don't want to waste my time, but if I can receive some comments back from the other commissioners on, you know, do you have some support on this, guys?
Um, is this something you would like to Lake Level Committee to come up with a tentative plan?
Yes, yes, I would.
Present to the board?
Yep.
Okay.
It's what you guys are here for. Don't hit me, Darlene.
Yes. I value Commissioner Austin's comments.
I can't hear you, Mark.
I value Commissioner Austin's comments, and I think, I appreciate the fact that our controller was so quick on the ball to be able to throw in numbers. Maybe I could suggest that we have more of a formal process in a couple of weeks, because I, again, the comments just made by Controller Valentino are very substantive. But I do value your comments, because I think for transparency with the public and also for the commissioners to have that information.
Thank you.
Yeah, I support that. But I don't think we need a motion or resolution, I think comment or caller is substantive enough to be able to inform the public, these those are my thoughts. But I, but I could be wrong, I have to give that some thought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, anybody else?
I'd support something in writing, I mean, I mean, saying something and then coming back later is.
Don't work on it.
Thinking writing, that, that's what I'm asking, if I, if I'm getting, you know, you obviously support Commissioner Milburn, and I think Darlene and Rex supported, Jody seems to support it.
It is, Merritt.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Number thirteen, motions and resolutions. We have one. Are you ready?
Move to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four annual implementation plan for the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five multi-year plan, Region Nine Area Agency on Aging, as presented at the June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Commissioners regular meeting.
To move this, Chair.
I'll second that. Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Astor Green. Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson. Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
She carried.
Meeting reports, who would like to start? Rex, would you?
The Lake Committee has come up with a wage and salary report. And we're going to take that, make a discussion with us, and, and decide when we're going to post the internal listing on that. And then also, I believe I have a meeting today with the Hazardous Waste Committee at twelve o'clock.
Thank you.
We had a financial meeting a little while back, I believe Jody was there with the sheriff and, you know, went over a lot of numbers, and they had to do with childcare stuff, stuff that we were talking about earlier, but it kind of like all blended together, so I needed a further explanation on that, but it went very well, and then, you know, and they explained a lot about the shortcomings on how things are financed, having to do with juveniles and, and real shortcomings that we have, I believe it's probably everywhere where juveniles are put up. And something that we certainly needs to be addressed in the future, hopefully.
District Health and E D C also see a comment from a gentleman from Higgins Lake. It would probably, it would probably be prudent for us down the road to set a time where the commissioners could go to the different control structures, and a time that would be convenient for the commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Last week, I had District Health over and approved the budget and passed that. I had Michigan Works, and that was on budgets and setting aside money to different groups and entities and how they were going to run. On, they're really pushing their navigation partnership with the locals. Um, and Monday, I had the substance use disorder meeting up in Gaylord, and we went over all of our budget reviews and allocations, and at the end, going into the new current fiscal year, Roscommon County is actually sitting very well compared to other counties in the amount of money that is there to do different projects. And then last night was the Holton Lake Improvement Board, and we asked the treatment of the lake and beakers will be in the resource listed and.
Thank you. I attended the agenda meeting. Mark, we attended an airport meeting.
I forgot, as soon as, as soon as you started to talk, I wrote it down, airport.
And our new county drain commissioner made the magazine, it was a nice little article, everyone has a copy of that.
It's all good.
That's it for my public comment, number fifteen. Taking Eric's spot.
He's actually better than I was, so.
You're writing them?
I don't know, your timing was great.
Yeah.
My clock already started.
Yes, no?
I just wanted to thank everyone for the willingness, it seems now to discuss the things like that Jody mentioned in the cost deferment, and the other things that apparently Commissioner Wilson mentioned that the Lake Committee can discuss and, and come back with a report, hopefully that can be talked about at the next board meeting by the members in the public domain here. And I would encourage you to take a look maybe at some of the other things that I, I'd attempted to mention earlier that are concerns of the citizens in that committee and see if there are some simple answers to those things, so that those things can be made public knowledge also. That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom land? Number sixteen, German.
To move this, Chair.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Thank you.